All right, we're on here.
Okay, the zoning board of adjustment, regular meeting is hereby called to order at seven thirty-five. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board, by sending a copy to their consental, and by finally a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures, any meeting, hearing, or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi- quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to judicial meeting slash hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off, announcement is made that is a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past ten thirty P M and any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices, everybody take out their phones and put down the volume so we don't have anybody's ringing phone interrupting us. Mute the cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance, would you lead us, Tom, please?
Gladly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Just to let you know, Jerry Aronio called me and said he couldn't make a Gator family thing come up.
Okay. So Mr. Aronio is excused, Mr. Gianocas is excused, Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Watts is excused, Mr. Zidrosny is excused, Mr. White?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Correct?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. All right, now, we have the minute meetings of March fourth, March eighteenth, April fifteenth, and May sixth, the May twentieth, June seventeenth, and July fifteenth, the forthcoming, will be forthcoming in the future.
Those take a little to your agenda.
Yeah, so, this, everybody had a chance to review them, I looked them over, they looked fine. Any questions or comments on these minutes?
Maybe application twenty-five, one oh Z, I think we should get rid of that one.
Okay, yeah. But, you know, any, any comments on the wording, or the spelling, or the grammar? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve March fourth, March eighteenth, April fifteenth, and May sixth minute, median, minute, meetings? Minute, meeting minutes?
Yes.
So moved. Do I have to do them individually?
I was gonna say, is, there's some people, like myself.
Oh, yeah, I gotta do them individually, okay, you're right. Do I have a motion to accept the March fourth, twenty twenty-five minutes?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call on that one, please.
No, you can just.
Oh, okay, do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a motion, I'm the second?
Second.
Okay.
Oh, wait, Mr. White wasn't here for that.
I can't second. Oh, I wasn't here, sorry.
Right, okay, so do I hear a second for someone who was here?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the May sixth minutes.
Actually, although, April fifteenth, sorry, I just wanna go back for a second. I'm, I seem to be both present and excused and absent.
Yeah.
You're special.
April fifteen.
Yeah, right.
And I think you were there.
Were you two places at once?
Yeah, okay, so that's a correction.
Yeah.
So we'll prove it with that correction.
Or were you not, I, I, you, I don't think you were there. I don't have you on the vote.
Oh, so maybe I wasn't there, I don't know.
Okay, so he wasn't there, okay.
I'll double check it.
All right, well, with that proviso, just double check who was there.
Yeah.
All right, now we have the May sixth one, which is...
Only the two of you.
Right, okay, only Tom and I?
Yes.
Can we do that?
You can do that.
Sure, all right, make the, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, we did the minutes, that was fast. Now, we have the resolutions. And the resolutions are, Michael DeFinis, application number twenty-five dash zero-two-Z, and that one is, the hearing date was June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, the board action was June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, memorialization is today, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Has everybody had a chance to review that?
It's just the two of you.
It's just the two of us again?
I was actually, yeah, I was here for that.
Oh, you were here, okay.
Yes.
Jonathan, you're the only one eligible that's here. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the resolution of twenty-five dash zero-two-Z?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, they will.
Oh, now, now, roll call, okay, sorry.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
And Chairman Correct?
Yes, okay. All right, now, we have the...
Philic.
Philic. Application twenty-five dash zero-six-Z, hearing date, June seventeenth, board action, June seventeenth, memorialization, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Same deeds.
Same people, okay. Everybody had a chance to look at it?
Mm-hmm.
Any problems, questions, corrections? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to accept the August, the twenty-five dash zero-six-Z resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, roll call.
Vice Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes. Oh, wait a minute, did you, you said vice?
He demoted him.
He's demoted.
Yes.
Yes.
It's okay.
That's okay.
Vice Chairman, Chairman.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, I thought, you know, I heard my name twice, but I didn't realize what was in front of it. Okay, the next, next one.
The next one is just the two of you, yes.
Yeah, right, the next one is just the two of us, right. Got this guy called Paul White here. Application twenty-five dash one zero Z, it's the hearing date, July fifteenth, board action, July fifteenth, memorialization, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Tom, have you had a chance to look at it?
I have, it looks very good.
Okay, very good, all right. Do I hear a motion from you?
So moved.
Second.
Right, Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay, good, done with that. Now, now, we got the fun part. We have to look over our...
My neighbors arguing.
Our lovely zoning board of adjustment annual report for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four.
Chris, I forgot the resolution, so if you wanna read it or...
Oh, yeah, I have a copy, if I could just pass it down.
Oh, yes.
Just a one-page resolution, just memorializing, adopting the...
Assume we do that.
Okay, fine, yeah.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, no, I know.
Looks like that.
Having had a chance to look at it, now, who's, how did this get done? It was between Liz and Deb?
And Joe. And Joe. And Joe.
And a lot of it, honestly, was pulled over from year to year, because nothing's really...
Right, so, you, I'll, I'll just walk the board through real quick, so, basically, it starts out, the beginning paragraph is pretty standard, as far as the requirements from the M L U L, then, it's, you know, then Liz's summary, board planner summary, then Joe reviewed previous reports, the previous annual report that Casey and Keller did as our engineer prior to when Joe was here.
Right.
So, and he agreed, and, you know, basically the same, and agreed with Liz. And then, there's a little summary from me, a board discussion, and then, as you'll note on page three, I put in a year-end summary of all, of, from, the years we're reviewing currently, which is twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, I put in the amount of applications that the board saw that year, and noted the approved, denied, any withdrawn or pending.
Okay.
And then, the following pages are all of the applications that the board saw.
Okay.
In detail, which gives you the application number, the filing date, address, descriptions, status, and memorialization.
Okay. The only comment I have is on sheds, do, do you wanna go into, I know it says, "to bend it to provide greater square footage," do you wanna have why that's needed, or do you, does it matter? I mean, are, are reasoning behind it?
We could say to comply with...
U C C.
U C C code.
And to make more practical, and to be more practical. Ten by ten isn't too practical.
Right, exactly.
Okay, yeah, I'd like a little explanation, because if the planning board looks at this and say, "Well, why the hell should we do it?"
Yeah.
You know, what's the reason behind it?
Well, in addition, I don't know if we wanna, or I could add something in my summary, but I have been kind of working with the zoning, the planning board to update sheds for other reasons.
Okay.
In addition to sizes.
Right.
There are certain zones in town that I, as a zoning officer, would like there to be less restrictions on setback. So, for instance, in every zone in town, you have a ten-foot setback.
Well, which is impractical sometimes.
Sometimes impractical, yes, so, depending on topography, but the smaller zones in town.
Yeah.
I feel there should be a five-foot setback, so...
Right, right, so you don't have to jam it against the side of your house.
Exactly, exactly. So, unless the board wants me to update that, I'm gonna continue to work with the planning board.
That's fine, but, I mean, I just want a little explanation in that, so that they, it goes along with your, what you're doing.
Hundred percent.
They know that we're in line with that. Now, the generators, too.
While you're on sheds, Ed.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If you, if you wanted to do it...
Yeah, go ahead, let's do sheds.
Each person, or...
Yeah, no, no, no.
If we're on sheds, I see that you, the, the idea is to amend, to permit greater square footage, I like that.
Well, you would, to your point, do you wanna do that by different R zones? So, three, four, and five, you might have greater amounts.
Not really, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Because regardless of the zone, there's an impervious coverage calculation. So, that's number one. So, if there's a large zone or a small zone, if you're coming to move a shed, you gotta meet your impervious coverage, or else you don't get a shed. That's number one. And number two, some of the larger properties, they may come with, like, a, like, a huge shed, okay? But, the U C C code states, anything over two hundred square feet requires construction permits, in addition to the zoning permit. So, that's why we want the code just to reflect that, anything, you know, two hundred square feet or larger, you know?
Okay.
But if somebody comes in with, like, a Rubbermaid shed, that's like...
Yeah, right.
Like, I'm gonna be like...
Twelve by ten or something, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, you know, something small, then they just need a standard zoning permit.
Yeah.
Okay, another question on that, what about two or more sheds? You could have two small utility sheds that are, like, five feet deep and eight feet wide.
No, not allowed.
I know they're not allowed, but maybe we should, maybe we should, could discuss that, or they, let them hash it out.
If you'd like to, if, we'd like to put that forward to the planning board, I don't think that, as a zoning officer, I don't personally think that you need it, because some, some properties larger, too, they either have, like, a pole barn, detached garage...
But if you call it a barn or a garage, it isn't a shed, yeah.
Right, I do think what we do need in the code, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need a better, we need better definitions of what accessory structures are.
Okay. That should be, yeah, that could be...
Because, for instance, the, you know, under accessory structures right now, you have generators, you have sheds, you have pole barns, you have garages.
Generators, to be, yeah.
A pole barn is less restriction? Less, less restrict, oh.
But, to be considered, to consider a generator a accessory structure is ridiculous.
Exactly.
It's not a structure.
Especially where we live, everybody's, I'm not at power every other day.
Right, exactly.
We're on that.
Oh, so, well, I can tell you, since, since the pandemic, I, I see at least five to ten generator applications on my desk every month.
Is there a way we could just make it easier for somebody?
That's what we're trying, that's what we wanna do. We wanna make generators easier to, to position on your property, and easier to get one to put on your property, not make it as onerous as if you're building an addition to your house, which is, what it appears to be.
I would say, but a good idea, Tom, to your point, is if you, maybe we could add, like, if you want two sheds that don't equal a certain square footage.
Right, true, yeah.
So, if you're going to Home Depot and you're buying, like, a Rubbermaid pre-shed or something like that, we could put, we could suggest to the planning board that we allow people to have two sheds back to back, as long as they equal a certain square footage.
Right, right.
Or a hundred square feet.
Right, right, yeah, whatever, yeah. Because it would, so maybe they want two, because one's got the pole stuff in it, or one's got kids' toys, and the other one has garden stuff.
Yeah, swimming stuff, whatever.
Yeah.
So, in that respect, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was going with that, thank you.
All right, but what about the generator one? I mean, is there any way, I mean...
Is there a way you could do, like, a waiver or something, like, someone just wants to, they wanna put a four-by-four concrete pad and put a generator, and what's the big deal?
Why is it, why does it have to be ten feet from, from your house?
Uh, not ten feet from the house, it's ten feet from...
It says ten feet from a principal building.
This language needs to be updated.
Yeah.
Because we had put it in, because we had been interpreting it that way, and a closer read of the ordinance says it only applies in non-residential use.
Oh, so, yeah, we have to fix this.
Right, I mean, it, it doesn't need to be fixed, what needs to be fixed is how Joe and I interpret.
That's fine, but we have to fix our report.
Yeah.
Because I don't wanna report to him.
Exactly, we need to fix the report.
So, in other words, you don't need to have ten feet from your house.
No, but I think, I think, though, both Joe and I, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of a stupid thing, but it's a little annoying, because it refers back to previous sections on...
On accessory structures.
On accessory structures, so you're kinda like, just put it all in one place.
Right, well, that could be his suggestion, too, why don't we rewrite that?
Yeah.
That, to say that.
In the U C C code, is there a, a minimum distance from a window? Because I know when I put my generator in, that was one of the clauses.
So, U C C and, U C C basically states, you know, a certain vicinity within a window or a door, or, I think vents, too, like, certain types of vents from a home, it has to be fi, the generator has to be five feet. Or, but if there's nothing on that side of the house, it can be eighteen, eighteen inches is the closest that it can get to a home. That is my understanding.
Okay, so, when you say...
It'll have to be ten feet from any property line.
What if a window's higher than it? It, it, does that matter, too?
It does matter, yeah.
Okay, no, what I'm saying, does that make it...
Well, like, a second story, but no, that I don't know.
Okay.
But a second story should be far enough away, just by...
It should be, but I don't...
It should be, right.
I'm not an electrician or, or...
Well, that, that's due to the fact that it's a gasoline engine, and it doesn't want fumes sucking back into the house.
Exactly.
Because that can happen, I had a, a pump on my, I lost electricity, and I was pumping out my, my, my...
Sub-pump.
Sub-pump pit, and I had to keep the garage door open, and it sucked it back into the garage, you know, you don't realize that.
I mean, that, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's, like I said, the, the distance, I know that there's code for that.
Yeah.
So, that the electricians in U C C use, but I'm not exactly sure, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I know that there's, if there's nothing on the side of the house, it can be eighteen inches, that I do know.
Yeah, because there's nowhere for it to suck back in the exhaust, okay. All right, so, with that said, just fix the generator paragraph, so it sounds, sounds like it, it understands what the ordinance is, and that, what we mean by it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, the only way we should start over here, by the, undersized lots, let's start with the front, I just went to sheds for some reason, but, undersized lots, we've been telling them this forever.
This was, yes, and it's in the master plan.
And I like the way you wrote this, because it, it's true, it's like, what did we expect? Some millionaire to come in and buy all the property and knock 'em down?
Yeah.
That ain't happening.
And, and, and you want people to invest in their properties.
Yeah.
And improve their homes, and so, you wanna not, it's particularly for single-family homeowners, you don't wanna make it too onerous, and so, I think...
And most, most of these lots that we're dealing with are in the downtown Sterling area.
Yeah.
No one's gonna knock them down and build another house, because most of it's in a potential flood area.
Yeah.
So, you're not gonna invest the money in there.
Yeah.
They're, they're not doing it. They'll make the house bigger, they'll make the house more useful, but they're not going to buy three lots and build another house.
Right.
It's not happening.
You know, another thing we're finding, too, is that, you know, which this board has seen multiples, the impervious coverage calculation.
Yes.
Because, you know, you have the properties that clearly don't have any water issues.
Right.
Even though, you know, the town is the great swamp, but, you know, and, you know, it causes problems for people to do additions.
Yeah.
Or they have to come to the board, because, you know...
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, with the smaller lots, it hits you harder, because, you know, you're already over, because years ago, they didn't care about that, so they built the house, built the driveway, whatever, and you were basically already over the twenty percent at that point. So, whatever you do on your property, a deck or whatever, you're, you're twenty-five, third, twenty-six percent over there, so, yeah, that is an issue, but, then again, you have the issue is, if everybody goes to thirty percent on their property, then you've got no, no place for the rain to go, so, that's, that's the, yeah.
But a lot of them are already thirty percent, and they still, they still have to come in when they wanna do something, I'm just...
Yeah, no, no, I know.
Again, you have, in my neck of the woods over there, it's, uh, there's lots that are fifty by a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I know.
They're, they're so narrow, I mean, they have a house and a driveway, they're already at thirty-five, forty percent.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, you're talking about, you know, if it was a new house, they'd knock it down, and they could be in compliance. The two new houses that are built on gates, due to the terrain, you can't.
Right.
Like, if I knocked down my house where I live, I have, I, if I had to go back fifty feet, I'd be at the bottom, I'd have all the water running down a hill right in my front, I'd have to, I have to have my house twenty feet from the curb, and all the house on that block, so even if you were to knock 'em down, due to the terrain, you couldn't do, you couldn't, you couldn't do it fifty feet anyway, no, you can't. It, it is a mess over there, because, like you said, years ago, it was like, you know, what I understand, they used to write on the back of the envelope, "I'm building this house," and that was it, supposedly, you know? And that was it, they let 'em do it supposedly, that's, that's, that's how easy it was, I talked to the old timers in the area, as they tell me.
Yeah, that's, that's basically creating a lot of issues for us now.
Yeah, now, yes.
Yeah, because now the ordinances get modernized and, and updated, and none of these areas comply with it, and you've got people that are just coming in going, "Oh, I built the house that way." But, I understand, like, we sympathize with them, and that's a problem, but, you know, I like that, that issue, because, you know, we have to just, maybe they should zone it towards there, and then deal with the coverage, and then deal with, you know, so that you can tailor it to, to the property or to the neighborhood, and not make that neighborhood already non-compliant, basically, and, you know...
That'd be hard, right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they still might have to come in for a variance, but at least it would be less onerous and less of a, of a problem.
Well, and I think there's ways that we can, you know, and Joe could give input as far as, you know, the runoff and whatnot.
Yeah.
To lessen impacts on residents who want to, you know, modify.
Yeah.
When it comes to the water issue, Joe's gonna have to get involved in, you know...
Well, see, it's not always water, because sometimes these people are just popping up their roofline, and it's an issue.
Yeah.
They're not doing any, any impervious coverage, they're just making a wall that's now more wall next to what was already not, you know...
Same footprint, they're just going up, yeah, and they gotta come for a variance, that's crazy.
We had that happen.
Yo, yeah.
And...
The one lady was here for six inches, it was crazy.
Yeah.
The one on Mitchell.
But, you know, that, I like that paragraph, so that's, that's, any other comments on the undersized lot? Changing the wording or anything?
No.
I think that's good, okay. Corner lots, this, yeah, corner lots and, and through lots, where you have streets on both ends. We gotta have a, a thing where you come in and you say, "This is what I want, my front lawn, I want the front yard to be where my spouse's face is, and I want the rear yard, and that's forever, and now, whenever you come in, we're gonna consider this the front lawn and this the rear lawn," not that you have two front lawns, because...
It's an interesting question, and I was gonna ask, bring this up tonight, because I literally just got a call from an attorney that's getting ready to submit an application regarding a corner lot. And he, he, and, you know, he works in multiple towns, so he basically said, "All right, wait, remind me what Long Hill does, do you say that their front, their address, street address is their front yard, and then the other side is the side yard?"
No, we don't...
Like, no, Long Hill, so, can, do, are there some towns that actually do that?
A lot of towns have two front yards, I mean, or the setback, you have to meet the setback from the, the two streets, but then, there are differences as to how you consider the other, the other lot lines, because, for example, you know, you typically want a rear yard that's, you know, allow, allows somebody to have...
A fence.
A, you know, patio, or barbecue, or whatever, and so, you don't...
Or a privacy fence.
Or a privacy.
Because if you have a backyard with a, with a street next to, you can't put a fence over it, because that's considered a front lawn, that's ridiculous.
So, it's, it, I mean, the other, so, anyway, everybody handles it a little differently, but I think the, the problem in, in Long Hill's ordinance is it doesn't handle it at all.
Right, it leaves it up to us to figure out.
Are we able to, are we able to designate by ordinance? Like, can we say, all right, if your, if your property address, you know, is one street, then the other street can be your side yard, and then this is your rear yard, are we able to do that?
You can do something like that, I mean, I, some towns, it's like, oh, if, if, let's say, it's the narrower of the two...
Yeah.
Street frontages is...
Right.
I mean, it, it, it depends on what you wanna do, I mean, I, it really, it's...
We should, we should do something like that, because what's happening now is people are coming in, and, with two front lawns, it's, it's a greater setback, and you can't, you know, you wanna build the side of your, well, you consider the side of your house, and we're considering it a front lawn.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you gotta be fifty feet, what do you mean fifty feet? It's supposed to be twenty on the side yard.
Exactly.
That's ridiculous.
Especially on narrower lots.
Yeah.
Well, and that's the problem with this one application that's gonna be coming to us, is literally, to my understanding, the way the house is situated on the lot, they meet one side, but now, they're just wanna go straight up.
Right, right.
Because they're too close within the front yard setback on one of the sides, you know, one of the fronts.
Yeah, key here is side, and we're considering it a front lawn, which is totally ridiculous.
It, it, what, it matters if, let's say, well, I'm not just sure it ever matters, really, but like, the, if every other house on that street, that's, it's the side yard for that guy, but it's the front for everybody else, everybody else is way back, then it looks weird, right?
Right, right.
But, it's, it...
Normally, that isn't the case.
Yeah.
Normally, your house is sitting the same as everyone else's setback, but you just happen to have a side yard that's, that's bordered by a street.
Yeah.
And now because of that, the guy next to you can do something that you can't do because you have a fifty-foot setback and he only has a twenty-foot setback.
Devil's advocate though, if you call one street a front yard and the other street is gonna be a side yard, you could take that house, put it back your fifty feet on the front yard, or you can move it all the way over to the other street, so it's only twenty feet off.
Right.
Now, is that what you wanna do?
That could be awkward.
Where the other houses on that street will be back fifty, so you're gonna be sticking in front of them by thirty feet.
I'm not saying it's a plus or a minus, just opposite point.
No, but it, 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 it also, some towns also say you gotta look at what the other setbacks are, like the, um-
Prevailing setback.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I know the previous town that I worked in had what we call an established setback.
Yeah.
Where they took, like, two to four, two to three houses on each side of the subject property.
Yeah.
And if the setbacks were all within, you know, a foot or two of each other, then you didn't have to go for variance.
Okay.
Kinda thing.
Okay.
So, that would be, maybe something under yard modifications too, but, um, you know, but again, like, a surveyor would have to prove that to the zoning officer.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that, that would make sense, other than just summarily saying it's fifty feet cause it's a front yard.
Right, so if it's an established setback.
I thi- and a lot of towns will have something like fifty feet or the prevailing setback, so if everybody on that street needs setback twenty feet.
And there aren't too many houses setback fifty feet in most of these neighborhoods you're talking about. I mean, and even, the houses I'm thinking about, like on the Greenwood Drive area, the corner houses, even if you came closer to the street, it wouldn't affect anyone else's, because there's usually nobody, the house, the, the street is not designed that way, it's not. Yeah, you don't see the other house, it wouldn't make any difference.
Right.
But, uh, the houses, I mean, there's one on, uh, those houses on River Road and that little street that they call, uh, Valley Road, but it isn't, it's just that little street that goes off. The front of the house is, is the Valley Road address, but the driveway's on River Road.
Right.
So, is that their front? Because that's their address, or is this their front?
Right. Yeah, I, I, right, I, I would say it probably should be where the house itself is how that is oriented, being like, where's the front door?
Well, originally, that was the front door. Now they do have a front door over here, they have another front door with a garage. So that's the guy that came before us for the deck.
Yeah.
That, the rear yard was basically as, as wide as that table, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, was his rear yard really his rear yard or was it the side yard? What was it?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You know, but, um, i- it's a, that's the weirdest property when it comes to that, because of that location of, of, and the streets and his driveway and that, and the doors, but-
But you also, you have situations sometimes where the corner lot, the, the house next to it is the, the house at the corner is backing onto somebody's backyard.
Yeah.
Right? And then if you allow that person to only have a minimal side yard setback, you're really allowing that house to like kind of have a greater presence in the other neighbor's backyard.
True.
Anyway.
Yeah, that, that-
It, it's been handled in a lot of different ways and we can-
Yeah, but I think we have to at least handle it.
Yep, I agree.
And not let, you know.
The bare minimum is just designate a rear yard, you know.
I was gonna say to Tom's devil's advocate here, I would say that, and I don't know if they can handle it this way, most of what we see are existing, you know, footprints, and they're just asking to do something else, and they get, they get dinged because of the fact that they're, they're they're not looking to actually move their house over. In most cases, it's not looking at-
Second floor, they're usually going up, yeah.
So it's usually something or, or, you know, some other thing, and that they get dinged because they have a pre, you know, the existing, um, uh, issue. So I don't know if they can write it in such a way that it says, um, like, essentially, if you have-
They're not changing the footprint.
Not changing the footprint, then it, then you're, you're kind of grandfathered in or something, but if you're looking to do new construction, you cannot be-
But changing the footprint, basically, moving the foot-
Yeah, you know, moving the whole house, then you can't be within, you know, whatever you said about the existing, the existing setbacks on the block or something like that.
One of them as a front yard.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's getting too in-depth, but-
And basically, I think what, what I hear we're saying is that at least have some guidance for us, cause right now, if there's no guidance, we're sitting here saying, okay, what do you wanna pick as your front lawn?
I mean, cause, that's right, I, when I started here, people said, oh, we always just say two front yards and two side yards. And so I've always put that in the letters, but there's nothing in the ordinance.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I think we did, because if it wasn't in the ordinance, it was, didn't we say this one time that it was Moss, is it Mossburg?
Moss, I, but it, it's-
But it's not defined.
It's not, yeah.
So that's what we go through, right.
Yeah. Alright, I think we beat that one to death.
Yeah.
Um, setbacks, similar type of thing. Do we do from the deck, from the patio, from the steps, from the stoop, from the, you know, where do we go, where do we measure from? Some, some municipalities say it's from the building wall, it's from the foundation.
Right.
Because what's in front of it is just a minor accoutrement, it's not something that, you know, unless it's a grandiose.
Situation lately with one of the variances that was approved and they're in final, and as most of you know, I think that, you know, when you have a variance, they go through construction, we have the application, what's called an asphalt survey.
Right.
So that Joe and I, as the engineer, you know, and my zoning officer, we can just confirm that they came in, you know, with everything they were allowed by the board. The interesting scenario was, was there's a, uh, was a detached garage. The surveyor took the measurement from the property line to the roofline, not to the, and it was a two-foot difference.
Hmm.
So if he does it to the roofline, then he doesn't come in at the setback. But if he does it to the foundation line, it does. So-
The roofline wasn't closer.
Do that.
Now, can't, the other way around.
The roofline.
No, wait, but the roofline would have been further away.
If you have a overhanging roof.
Yes.
Technically, the setback.
You're saying where the eaves are, where it comes out?
Where, where, yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I, I mean, consistently, we have not, we have not done that. Like, if it's a, if it's a, um, the, a bump out, an architectural bump out, we would take it to that.
Right.
But we've never measured exactly to, unless the surveyor has and we haven't caught it. But in this particular case, Joe just said, no, it, it was to the foundation.
Right.
That's what you would think, yeah.
Yeah, and he, and, and then it fit, but that's my point, is Liz, as Liz is saying, is that we don't have a specific definition, so it's kinda-
There should be, yeah, yeah, here again, we need the guidance.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be less, uh, le- left up to us as the board to do that, because sometimes we could have an inconsistent
Right.
case of, one way would, one time we might be doing it one way, and then another time we'll do it another way, because of whatever the situation is. We should have a consistent way of looking at it.
Especially since we're semi-judicial, we're not supposed to be making opinions.
Right, 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 yeah, we're supposed to be got, use, we're supposed to be guided by the ordinances, not having to interpret them.
Exactly.
Not activist judges, I think.
Yeah, well, uh, but, um, okay, so we, we killed, we did generators. Sheds we did, goals and objectives.
Before we go there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, okay, so the goals and objectives, these are in the ordinance at the beginning, and I think they were mimicked the, um, master plan from the nineties. And the thing is, with the new master plan, these goals and objectives are now outdated, and we have, for example, and, well, actually, it wasn't here, uh, it wasn't at this board, it was, um, the Delaware Ave- Avenue.
Oh, that's right, you had the, the board subdivision.
Yeah, where, um, the justifications given by their experts were saying consistencies with the goals and objectives in the ordinance when that is, is outdated. And it's unusual to have the goals and objectives of the master plan in your ordinance, and so I would recommend taking it out. Just because it, it's too confusing and it's too much, but, y- you know.
It, it, it gives them, uh, out, then, basically.
Yeah, well, it was just cause the guy kept talking about a rural, that it's a rural town or semi-rural town, because that's what the language is. Whereas the planning board specifically took out semi-rural from all of the master plan. Anyway, it, I just would recommend it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a problem when it doesn't sync up.
Yeah, exactly.
Mm-hmm, okay. Doesn't mean we got arguments based on things that aren't relevant, yeah.
Yeah, or it's just, well, we don't consider ourselves semi-rural anymore, and what's, they're gonna say, well, it's in your ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not the master plan.
But not in the master plan, yeah.
Okay.
Which is what the-
Any other comments on that?
On that, no.
Okay, good. Um, yard, yard modifications should be made clear to under-
I like this one.
Additionally, section relating to reductions in impervious coverage, decks of certain stormwater mitigation strategies, okay. Explain this, so a little better.
So the yard, the yard modification section, right, allows for some exceptions, um, for example, if you're gonna go up or if you're gonna go into the, um, into the required setback, given you meet a whole bunch of other conditions, like you've met all the impervious coverage, you met this, you met that. We almost never have somebody who meets all those things, so the, this section almost always never appli- almost never applies. What Deb and I, at a couple of times, you, you start reading, it's so-
Convoluted.
Convoluted. And this section, the, the section I specifically called out with the impervious coverage is because if you recall, we had a woman who came in and wanted to just rebuild her deck, right, and she needed an impervious coverage. And there was some discussion on the board, and we said, well, the ordinance allows you to do this if you do X, Y, and Z. And when Joe, who knows a lot more about stormwater than any of us, looked at the resolution, and he was just like, that's insane, that's so overkill.
Yeah.
And so, but we were like, what's in the ordinance?
Right, we were following the ordinance.
And so-
Yeah, okay.
That is kind of, you know, it's, I think probably just outdated, you know.
Okay, so that should be looked at, modernized, and reworked.
Exactly.
Okay, and you'll help him with that, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, and Joe.
Yeah, she's, she's, Liz is the writer of the ordinances.
Yeah, right, obviously.
And I'm the big mouth of the group.
Really?
No.
Ah, never would have believed that.
Well, cause I'm the zoning officer too, so, like, I'm the one on the, you know, the-
You're the, you're the front line.
I have to be the one that gives everybody the bad news.
Yeah.
Fair bad news.
You know, so, and like, you know, Jonathan was saying before, my, like, my coworkers get annoyed because they hear, it's like, I'm like a broken record, I, well, I've never seen the board deny these types of variances for existing non-conforming conditions. It's not your fault, like, literally, I'm a broken record, so.
Well, it, when you buy a house, most people aren't like, what's the impervious coverage?
No, no.
Yeah, nobody thinks of that. I don't think anybody, I, I very seldom, me as an attorney, I didn't even think of that sometimes. You don't think of those things.
Unless, unless, unless somebody within the family is somehow involved in surveying, in, in construction.
Yeah.
Or some sort of municipal government.
Right, right.
Nine out of ten times, people-
Now, see, now I would think about it.
Right, if you're not aware that you inherit the, the, the problems from-
You apply your own, unless there was a variance, unless he went and got some, uh, some, uh, redemption, yeah.
It's kinda shocking that it doesn't show up in the real estate, like-
No, it doesn't, that's the funny thing. Yeah, that, it, title search is just ownership, and there's no place that searches that. Title company should really do that. That would be like an added bonus. Oh, we not only search title, but we search the ordinances and we search permits and, you know, we, we can tell you if you're violating something, or the guy didn't- Yeah.
And, I mean, you would also could use those as a negotiating, well, present owner has to get a permit.
Right, right, yeah, exactly. Yeah, because you failed to get your CO for something, or you didn't get the final inspection for this, or you didn't even get a permit for it, yeah.
Well, there are, there are, there are realtors out there that will take the initiative and submit Oprah requests when they're looking to sell a house to a client, and that's very helpful to a propos- you know, future buyer, you know, home buyer.
And then other real estate agents will say they don't wanna know that, cause then it'll screw up the deal.
They won't get the sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, why screw up the deal? And, and I'm sure Gary would be more intelligent.
I know, I was gonna say.
Yeah, um, okay, now, board engineers, uh, board engineer, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I, there's an item here, and I'm not sure if we captured it last time we talked about this, I know we talked about it at some point. Uh, mother-daughter suites.
Oh, yeah.
And getting that whole-
Yeah, we should put a paragraph about that.
Cleaned up.
You know, just, it, it, and, and actually citing, uh, that one application that's on, uh, South Northfield that keeps coming back like a bad dream, you know, it, it's-
Senior suites and, uh-
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got to-
And accessory.
Yeah, we oughta massage that, you know, and that should really be clear, and I think, oh, one of the things you notice where if you have that and then you sell it, you gotta rip it out. I think it's ridiculous.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
They should really look at that and say, if you're selling it to someone who's gonna use it for the same purpose, you can leave it. If not, then, excuse me, there may be some reason you have to remove it, or, you know, you can, you can leave it if there's a, if you qualify for this or whatever.
But I like what you said there, for the same purpose, cause what you don't want is you don't want somebody buying a house that has a mother-daughter suite. And yet, and then it becomes a brothel or something.
Right.
It's a pretty extreme.
Which is going on now.
You're with your mind. Um, but, um-
Brothels in town?
Interestingly enough, and I, Chris and Liz could speak to this, cause ob- obviously, I will probably learn more in November when I go to the league again.
Yeah.
But I took a course at the league last year that basically was about this subject, what they call ADUs.
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling units. And the state at the time, we were told, that is working on, um, basically legislation that's going to force municipalities
To accept that.
To choose either a Plan A or Plan B. So you're go- so each municipality is going to have to choose
Okay.
some way, shape, or form of legislation to be able to include ADUs in their, uh, zoning.
In their zoning, yeah.
So I don't know, Chris and Liz, if you-
I, I've been hearing about it for years.
This is what Senator Cory Booker was trying to present, that one? Where he wa- he said you can use your garage and everything else you can?
Uh, you know, I don't know if it was Cory Booker.
Yeah, it was Cory Booker, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't specify which one, but-
Well, that's, he's, he's federal level. We thought, we're talking state level here.
Right, but he was trying to, he was trying to, you know, where you could, where if you had a garage, you can make it into an apartment, if you had a basement, you can make it into a party.
But, well, I mean, you, you brought this up, Paul, that in your neighborhood, you have people that either rent their house or rent, uh, party.
They're advertising and they, two thousand a month for a basement apartment, and they're advertising, and they get it, and it's been going on, supposedly if they don't have a kitchen, right? If they don't have a kitchen, they can, I, I find this amazing, so-
They're not supposed to rent it out, though, if it's not an apartment.
How they doing it?
Well, then they're doing it illegally. We don't know about it.
Right.
Oh, they know about it, I know, I know you guys know about it. I thought it was if they pulled their kitchen out, twenty-four Torberg, I'll tell you right now, the guy rented that right now.
Oh, no, no, that's a, I can tell you, that's a whole different scenario.
How?
He, because what he's doing, he built a commercial kitchen in his garage to do, um, cooking of something he wanted to cook or something. But we worked with him, he's not, according to the zoning, he went for all the zoning, he's not violating anything, and he's not renting it. We've, we have followed-
He's renting it.
Well, we haven't caught him.
He's renting it.
Well, we've tried to-
So he's living there and renting it?
Uh, he, I believe, I believe, I believe the township committee, you know, again, uh, this is a while ago, um, it started with the Airbnbs. Everybody was renting out Airbnbs, okay, let's go. Uh, Mr. Pigeon said, other towns start it where you can't rent it, you know, weekly or daily or nightly, but you can do sixty days plus and you can rent it.
Is that the way, I, no, I thought they said no Airbnbs or-
No, no Airbnbs. You can't do an Airbnb where you can rent it nightly and things like that, no, cause they had crazy stuff, cause he's talking about brothels, they were shooting, they were actually renting Airbnb up in my street and they were shooting pornos in the backyard, it was unbelievable. You, you just can't make this up. You just get cops came, everything, you just can't make this up. The people living next door, they have a kid that, you know, young kid, he's looking out the window, telling his parents, hey, look at this, run on. Yeah, so that's when he said, let's get rid of, that's when he said, let's get rid of the Airbnbs. And, uh, yeah, it was, it's unbelievable, and you know, people-
Expect that here, hopefully.
Oh, no, no, it's unbelievable. And then, uh, actually, I was in front of township committee and they said, well, you know, probably local people need another place, like, no, you go through the guy's reviews. You know, I couldn't get a, I couldn't get a, a hotel in Newark, I, it was, you know, flights were canceled, I had to come out to Long Hill, thank God I was there, and, uh, You know, I couldn't get, I couldn't get a, a hotel in Newark, it was, you know, flights were canceled, I had to come out the Long Hill, thank God I was there. Yeah, people come from Newark, they were coming from wherever, you know, and renting at the end of my block, I'm like, you have people, you know, pulling up with Ubers in the middle of the night, loading their cars with. You know, luggage going to the wrong people's houses, going, it was just crazy. So anyhow, they made it, they made it where it's supposed to be sixty days or more.
Park people.
Yeah, tell me about it.
But, uh.
I mean, I can tell you that, uh, the staff looks on a regular basis.
Yeah, I know.
On his website to make sure, so, I mean, obviously, please let us know if there's, you find something, but from what we understand. Everybody who's been notified, who had advertisements on Airbnb or.
To gank it, yeah.
Yeah, to take them down. I mean, apartments dot com, from, from the research that we've done, like, there definitely are. Many two-family grandfather apartments in town.
Right.
So, I, I, we haven't found anything illegal.
Okay.
To this, you know, going on, and that doesn't mean there isn't any.
No, no.
You know, when we, when we hear about it, we research it.
Okay.
But the point being is, yes.
But what, but what can we put in there about that? What paragraph can you put in there?
I think we could say that this is an issue that's come up and it should really be further examined, because there, there are. Deb is right, this is being, you know, been broached on a statewide level, and of course, we have home rules, so most municipalities are like, well, don't tell us what to do.
Right.
You know, don't.
But if we are addressing it, at least the state can see that we're addressing it.
No, a hundred percent, but I think the idea, uh, statewide, I, my understanding was that it would be sort of permitted in every municipality, probably in residential zones. And so.
Yeah, but I mean.
They would force you to.
They would for, you know.
Force you to take one plan or the other.
You, they would give you the ordinance, I, I don't know.
Cause I asked that question specifically.
But I mean, I'm, I'm more concerned with the fact that if somebody has one and then they want to sell their house, as, as that same use for someone. They, they're almost precluded from doing it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other thing I, I have thought, felt is that why limit it to seniors? Meeting if you have a disabled adult or, you know.
Yeah, shouldn't we just, it should be, uh, anyone that you have to take care of or somebody that needs your assistance, sure. Uh, shouldn't be just elderly.
So, and from my experience too, from other research that I've done, you know, um, when you have single-family zones. Somebody wants to build onto the house or a detached apartment, it should be a use variance, period. Regardless of the use, regardless of, you know, but, you know, and then it, then it's, everybody is treated equally. And you take it on a case-by-case basis, the board does, um, now, well, what, depending on what the state says, obviously.
But, yeah, you, exactly, but we should, I, we don't, right now, even on a state's case-by-case basis, we have no guidance from the, when the ordinance. Except for a very draconian thing saying that you can have it, but you can't, you know, what do we call it? And, you know, what happens if they want to sell the house with it to someone who wants, wants to use it for a similar use?
Coming for a use variance, we have to put the, we have to.
Right, right, but we had, we had trouble with that one, because it was.
Did we get that, was, was that a D one with that one, or was that a D three?
I think, I think it was a D one.
And then she came back to have it, we classified, it was, it was a mess.
No, and I.
Well, now, first she came, so, you're talking about three hundred in South Northfield.
Yeah.
So first it was a senior suite, but the reason she came to the board was because it was over the square footage.
Right.
Right.
It wasn't detached, because.
No, no, it's attached, yeah.
It was attached, but she was over the square footage.
Right.
That is allowed by our ordinance, so that's why she came to the board. When the individual was no longer living there, that's when she came for the use variance.
Right.
Then wanted to have it as an apartment for, you know, a teenage, or like, not a teenage, like, you know, a, a college student or another family member that was in the senior.
Right, right.
So.
That's where we have to have the address, the guidance from the ordinance, yeah.
But maybe, maybe people are okay with, if, if a house has an, you know, ancillary apartment, that that's okay.
Well, but, but the ordinance should at least address it, yeah.
But I think it's hard.
One way or the other, if they, if they don't want to have them, fine, if they want to have it strictly a buyer variance, if they want it, I don't really, it doesn't matter to me, as long as there's something in there that addresses it. So we're not trying to make it up as we go here.
Yeah, I, I a hundred percent.
Um, but, um, all right, any other issues? Okay, any other? Yeah, okay.
Is it any family suite?
Um, okay, what about board engineer agrees with comments, okay. Within the past several years, it is apparent that the current escrow deposit amounts required by ordinances are not sufficient for the review hearings and resolution. So you want to raise the escrow?
Yeah.
Okay, to what?
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
Comparative with other towns, right?
The bottom lot, yeah, well, I'm, A, I'm gonna compare it with other towns, but I have to, but I've been working this summer very diligently. Cause I gotta catch up, I'm so far, I'm literally behind in collecting money from, literally almost every applicant. We are running out of money. So, and it, we run out fast and I can't bring it in fast enough, so I don't know whether I'm gonna bring it up to three thousand, five thousand?
Well, what was it? What is it now?
Twenty-five hundred is the escrow deposit.
Okay, all right, so you gotta bring it up more than that, okay.
We need to bring it up. I've had some suggestions by some, some of my colleagues to say, oh, just a flat five thousand, but. That's, it's a big amount, it's a big amount to swallow.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be arbitrary, it should be based on what you think.
What have you been seeing here over the last, say, two years, and it maybe bumped that five percent?
Well, that's the thing, is it's anywhere from three thousand to ten thousand, type of application. So I'm trying to keep it, you know, I want to do something with like residential, maybe, you know, three to four thousand, somewhere in that.
Right, and commercial make it higher.
Right, and then commercial start it at least five thousand.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah, I have a tiered system where it depends on what you're doing, yeah.
You know, I definitely will look at our fees, I don't, I don't necessarily.
Look how much they ultimately spent, yeah.
Exactly. I don't necessarily think that our application fees are, um, too much or too little at this point. But I do want to do some research into other towns to see how they're charging.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've heard people say, you know, they don't do something because of the cost, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we have to be realistic considering the cost of our experts, considering the cost.
Well, and this is, this is another thing that I'm a broken record and I, and because, again, I'm the bearer of bad news, so I have to tell these people, well, the escrow deposit is X, you know. And, and you're probably not gonna get any of that money back. But I try to say to them, listen, but you, you, this is a small town, we don't have a planner and an engineer on staff.
On staff.
Time that will cover these expenses to the, and the taxpayers are not gonna cover them for you.
Right, right.
So.
I, I think one alternative, and I hate to talk myself out of money, but I think that it would be to not have professionals reviewing. Some of these single-family applications.
All right, now, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But at the same time, how do we pick and choose which ones you review and don't review?
For example, I, in one town that both Chris and I firm works, and we don't do any, uh, we don't do anything with. Um, single-family residents unless it involves a use variance.
Okay.
And so.
So a deck you wouldn't do.
Right.
A shed at that.
You wouldn't do a patio, you wouldn't do a shed.
We wouldn't do any of that.
You know, something, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I agree with that in some respects, because I've seen your reports and pretty much they're just. Outlining what standards we're looking for.
Right.
But they're really not fact-specific, cause there is no, no facts to that you have to really consider. It's just that the board should look at these criterias, which we already know, you're just giving us a outline with negative and positive criteria and things like that.
I think there are comments that, where I think are most valuable with the single-family is looking through what's on the lot and what's in the ordinance.
Right.
And, 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 and doing the zone.
And you know something, with our ordinances being so messed up sometimes, it is helpful.
Yeah.
So, you, you know, it's, it.
I would almost say like, I, I, like, I agree with Liz, like, because she is such a help to me.
Yeah.
In some of these, you know, cause a, a lot of times, there's so many gray areas in the interpretation, but which will hopefully fix. But on the flip side, the one thing we could do is I could have, you know, especially on the residentials, if the board were agreeable, we could try. You know, I could say to Liz, listen, could you just write up in an email format a zoning chart? That way she doesn't have to come to the, the, the meeting.
And bill for that time.
And bill for that time, yeah.
She'd just be billing for the minimal amount of time of the report.
Very basic, don't even like, not even put it in, she could put it in an email form to me, and then I can include that with the package to the board.
Well, a, as sometimes the engineer does, with just an email.
And on the flip side, if there are situations that we feel warrant.
A larger, a, a more expanded, yeah.
Then.
I, I, and I think a use variance case is probably appropriate, and I think perhaps some of the non-residential depending.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you would want to.
Yeah, and some of the more complicated things that, that infringe upon more of the, of the.
Like the Wendy's, I mean, you'd want.
Oh, you definitely, yeah.
You know, things like that.
And if there's an impervious coverage, if it's only because of impervious coverage, which we've been seeing.
Yeah.
I don't even think Liz should be involved, but Joe should be involved.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You know, and, and we've even seen that he's been very good about looking at something and saying, listen, this is existing conditions.
Right.
I don't see any issues with this, and he'll write like a quick email, I don't need to opine, it's fine as is if the board decides, you know, something to that effect.
I, I, we could work on that and, and try, I mean, that doesn't negate the fact that you may have to raise the amount. But the point is, at least we might be using less of it.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's appropriate too, I think sometimes it's.
Cause that, that's, I mean, you mentioned, Paul, that some people don't even bother coming for a variance because of the cost. And it may be something that we could help lower the cost, because it isn't that burdensome or, 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 or odious. A thing they're doing that would require both experts to opine on in a three-page report. Or sit here and tell us, you know, so.
Something, something as far as, you know, again, I, I know this from people who spoke to me about it, the gentleman who spoke, uh, the other week. One of them had a, their front staircase was the old wooden staircase, they wanted to rip it down.
And put a, a.
And they wanted to put, you know, a good concrete one, can't do it with a fifty-foot, go get an ASBIL, go get.
Yeah.
The staircase, even if I pay to build it, it's a couple grand, now I gotta get an ASBIL survey, that's two grand, gotta get a lock ring, play it, you know what?
See, now, that's.
Stick, stick, stick the rocks under the wood and they got a staircase that's falling apart that they're just gonna leave.
See, that's where the ordinance should come into play.
That's where somebody should get a waiver.
Replacing an existing structure.
Yeah.
As, as a, it's like, say, a wooden staircase that's already in that, and you're not expanding it, you're just replacing it with a similar, with different material, you shouldn't really have to. I mean, you should just basically get a permit and saying, okay, it's, it's there already, it's, it's in the, into the, uh, into the front lawn setback, but it's already there. So it's not really changing anything.
But again, it's a wooden staircase that was probably put in in, you know, nineteen sixties, and they want to change it to a concrete one, but now you gotta dig footings.
Right.
You know, they guess.
Right, as soon as you, you say the word footings, that's like the, that's like a bad word.
You're trying to make it better, you're trying to make the house, you know, somewhat, somewhat into the nineteenth century.
You're trying to make it safer so somebody's foot doesn't melt through the wooden steps, yeah.
Yeah, my neighbor next door has this problem, he keeps just stuffing rocks under it, and he leaves the wooden, and he, you know, he knows to do it right, it's gotta all be pulled out, and they're gonna have to footings, and he's not gonna do it. Cause just, again, just for the paperwork and applications, he's gonna lay out six, seven grand to put the staircase in, it's only a couple grand.
Right.
You're gonna spend four, five times the amount, so what are you gonna do? You're just gonna leave it.
Which doesn't help anybody.
No, no.
Because the next owner is probably gonna want to do that anyway, so. But, okay, I, I, I think we've come up with more, more issues than, than originally.
Could, could there be a waiver for something like that?
Well, that's, that's something that.
Possible, or you just say.
Definitely, it, it just depends on the situation, like, I can't speak to it without looking at.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a wooden staircase, now you want to put a, you know, concrete and brick and everything, make it nice, safe, you know, make it to co-put railings where to, you know.
So I, I can't speak for construction.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I can say for zoning, if somebody's replacing it as is for zoning purposes, it's fine, unless they're, unless they're making it larger.
I was just gonna say.
The footings would probably end up being, you know, so, so many inches larger, cause you're gonna have to put the brick and everything else, you know, inches, not feet, you know.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna come out close, it's gonna be the same distance from the house, maybe a little wider, but.
Yeah, I don't, I, I personally, I don't think I've ever denied a front porch replacement or.
Really, okay.
Not off the top of my head, I mean, unless, you know.
Unless they were told to get the survey or something.
Expand it in some way, shape, or form that.
They're making a, making a stoop into a porch.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
Well, again, again, the, the older porch is just supposed to have, what, a three-foot, um, um, platform, you know. I, I own a house in Twenty-two Milton, it's been built in nineteen thirties, that platform's a, a foot and a half, you know. For me to fix that, it's gonna have to be three feet, so therefore it's gonna be wider, so now what do I do in that situation?
Might need a fairer.
Right, it's crazy.
Yeah.
So guess what, I'm gonna keep hammering nails in it and keep that thing going, you know, that's it. But it's not fair, cause you know, again, it could look a lot better.
Yeah, and be more functional, yeah.
Cause I tell people all the time, I've, I've been through the variance process myself, and I live in a house that was built in nineteen forty.
There you go.
Literally, anything I do to my house, I need a variance for.
Yeah, that's not fair, yeah, it's not fair.
So, I feel everybody's pain.
Yeah, it's not fair, yeah.
But I mean, how would your town do it?
As far as.
You know.
We have the established setback.
Okay.
So if, if I, it's funny you say that, because I've always wanted to put a portico on my front, cause I have, like, I have a colonial, and I don't meet the front yard setback. But if I do, if I submit the established setback, then I'm allowed to put the portico because.
Into that, and not going beyond that established setback. See, now, something we would, might want to consider, that would help the guy with the steps.
That would probably help the guy with the steps, exactly.
Well, maybe put that in there, in the report.
I don't know, exactly, you'll have to say Livingston.
I, I think, well, that would go in, what section would that go in?
The setback section.
The setback section, there you go. See, we came up with another issue.
Establishing.
Right, right, instead of what the ordinance says, this is what you have, and this is now your established setback, you go, go into that, you're in trouble. If you stay within that, you're fine.
Exactly.
So that would help people that want to make a steps.
But like I said, you know, if it was built years ago, you're supposed to have a three-foot platform landing, and, you know, a lot of people have a foot, foot and a half, so right there, you're gonna have to.
Oh, well, that's different, yeah.
It's gonna be changed a little bit.
I asked you, um, Chris and Liz, I don't know if any other towns do this, or if it's technically not allowed to do. What if we were to set up some sort of subcommittee of the zoning board? That when I receive an application and deem it complete.
Yeah.
I were to send it to, let's say, the chair and then two other individuals, cause you can't have four.
Yeah.
And those three individuals could review it and decide if planning is warranted or, you know, engineering.
As long as you're not violating the Open Public Meetings Act, I don't think it's an issue.
Right.
Liz has a different opinion, but.
Cause it's not, it's not, it's not a technical review, like.
I've heard, you know, I think actually in my, in my hometown, they had something like that on the, cause what they did, they had a zoning board and a planning board, and they merged them at some point, they were trying to.
Shh, bad word.
Not saying we do that here, what I'm saying is at the time, they were a lot of moving, moving around to try to, you know, to avoid excess professional costs.
Right.
So I think, I'm pretty sure they set up like a, an application subcommittee.
We used to have a review.
I know that this particular board cannot do technical reviews for commercial and use variances and things of that nature. So if we take that out of the, the discussion, and we automatically know that those go to the professionals, right? But resident, little residential applications, if we could form, I mean, I would suggest if the board would consider it.
And what would we be doing?
So you'd look at the application, and you'd say, okay, this is an existing non-conforming application for impervious coverage, for a deck or a shed, or whatever the case may be.
Okay.
Um, and you could decide, well, I don't think this warrants, based on the neighborhood, based on the, the, you know, the application itself, that.
Warrants what?
What?
Warrants what?
Warrants a review from the planner.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, thank you, I, I, I didn't quite get what we were, our conclusion was supposed to be, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, because beyond that, we're not allowed to make an opinion about the thing itself.
No, well, that, yeah.
So we would look at it and say, we don't believe we need a, a, a planner's, uh, report, or we don't think we need an engineer's report.
And you could do it as like, I, I've seen in certain committees, like, you could do a rotating committee, if, if like, everybody on the board wants to be involved.
Sure.
Say in the month of January.
We get, we, well, three people.
It's you two and Paul, and then the month of February, it's three other, three other people, you could do it on a rotating basis or whatever, but.
Everybody has the misery of another night, yes.
But at least, those three individuals from the board are looking at the application and saying, well, you know what, I would really feel more comfortable based on the neighborhood and what they're requesting. If Liz didn't.
The idiosyncrasies of the area, yeah. Okay, and maybe we would say, well, the engineer isn't really not needed on this one, because there's not much engineering on this. And he usually does that on his own, too, he'll figure that out, yeah.
The only thing I will say is, and I joked about this, it's not a joke, but stormwater comes up all the time.
Yeah.
Even when we think it's not going to, it comes up, and so when Joe is like, I don't need to review this, there've been a couple times where.
It still come up.
It came up, and then he was mad at the conditions that we put in the, in the resolution.
Well, let me put it this way, I think that that is probably a good idea, but let's talk about it a little bit more and figure out.
For sure.
The guidelines on that because depending on which two you're picking, I don't wanna have it being uh, non con, non um.
Inconsistent.
I don't want inconsistencies, I want it to be objective.
Yeah.
So I wanna have some guidelines to follow on it or something. Maybe we can make up a checklist to say if it meets these things, it doesn't need it, or if it doesn't meet these things.
Yeah, I do too, sure.
Because that way you give somebody guideline, some some guidance on this, just like we want guidance from the planning board, our ordinances, we should have our own on that.
And I mean, I mean, cause Liz can attest, I think, you know, going back almost eight years now I've been here. And when when Ed, you interviewed me and you said, well, how how many, and then, you know, Livingston goes on the zoning board at night and I said, oh. You know, ten.
Yeah, I looked at my jaw drop.
You must go off the floor.
Yeah, I was like, what?
You know, and I don't, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but from my experience in an existing non-conforming condition.
Hmm.
Like Livingston didn't have a pl- the planner and ever, hardly ever the engineer, and then they would look at it and go, okay. Existing non-conforming, small lot, okay, you're approved.
No questions, no, no, no.
No, no, no real anything, okay, I mean, and obviously, they they were looking at it for conformity to the neighborhood.
Right.
You know, you're not talking about, you know, a a McMansion when there's a little tiny cave.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
The the, you know, the standards.
I couldn't imagine doing that, I really couldn't.
Yeah, like my little house in in Livingston, like I need a variance for everything, everything I do.
Now, would they treat yours the same way?
Yeah, although I went for a fence variance and it took two hours.
Really?
Yeah.
You never know what you're, what's gonna happen.
You never know.
Were they, were they on the fence about it? I couldn't be such a slammer, sorry.
Of course.
But that's what, but my my point being is I I feel like there's definitely a way that between the professionals and the board, we can kind of figure out. A way to limit some of the fees.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking of.
Especially in existing non-conforming residential.
Right, right, I or, yeah, very simple uh, thing, yeah. Alright, um.
I think, just to sum up, I think not having to do a report, if we just did like a zone table and then maybe some things that were like, hey, this is out, you know. We can understand this.
Right, 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 right.
Put it in an email.
Yeah.
And then we probably aren't needed at the hearing, and that actually is gonna save.
But I I just wanna make sure that in order to make that decision, we're basing it on objective standards and some checklist that we have.
Yeah, sure.
So that way, no matter what group of this of this body is looking at it, we're looking at it in the same perspective and the same standards. Um.
But like I said, I think in the town that we both work in, it's it's, you know, anything that's not a use variance and not a non-residential, we don't.
Yeah.
We don't review.
Okay.
I got a couple other towns where the the zoning officer will just do a uh, just a brief memo saying, this is these are the variances they need.
Okay.
It's really about.
Can you do that?
Oh, I could totally do that.
Okay.
Yeah, more work for her. Yeah, she has enough work, come on.
Yeah, you said, you said there are towns that actually have full-time, like, obviously, those are larger towns.
On on staff.
On staff? Yeah. And what do they do in terms of charging the applicants?
So it depends, um, some town, like, uh, since I work in Livingston, I can speak from Livingston and uh. I don't know if they still do this or not, but when I was working there, what they would do is if the engineer needed to review it. Um, for residential, they never charge for engineering or planning. If it was commercial, they would charge a portion of their hourly fee. So let's say, I don't know, their.
So basically, the town people picked it up.
Exactly, but it was only a portion of it.
Okay.
Because they're full stu- they're full-time on staff.
Right, but I mean, as far as residential goes.
Residential were never charged for engineering.
See, we used to have an on-staff engineer uh, years ago. And they decided they didn't wanna do that because they didn't wanna, they didn't want the expense of his salary, the benefits and all that other nonsense. So they decided to go contract and that was more led to putting the charge on on the applicant.
Well, yeah, because, you know, in a town like Livingston, and only one example, there are thirty thousand people versus nine thousand people here, right?
Right, yeah.
And that's rounding up.
There's more to spread the 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 misery, yeah, the cost.
Exactly.
But actually, even in towns that do have in-house people, they often hire outside consultants too.
Oh, I know that, yeah, but I mean, it's it's, yeah, they just. They tend to want to now hire more consult or more contract people as opposed to in-house.
Yeah.
Um.
It's better for their budget if they put the cost on.
Exactly, cause it's a fixed cost, so much a year, it's not, okay, uh, the healthcare went up or, okay, the pension went up or whatever. It's not, it's not the same.
Yeah, but in Livingston, for residential applications, they don't even collect escrow.
Really?
Really?
Nope, just a flat application fee.
Ah.
So tonight, their fees are being just, there's nobody to charge it to, there's no escrow.
No, so, well, I do the budget every year.
Mm-hmm.
And this is part of your budget.
And I budget, um.
And I tried to get out of it.
So there are, there are times in the town.
If we didn't have you here. But.
Yeah, each year in the budget, like the planning board budget right now is like over the top high because. Between the housing plan and working on revisions of ordinances.
Right, right.
You know.
So would it be cheaper to fi- hire somebody?
Yeah, Liz, Joe and the attorneys have been.
Working overtime.
Working overtime, yeah, and and like, I can't even fathom what they went through for, you know, up to June thirtieth with the second.
We barely.
I thought Steve was gonna have.
We didn't have to do that much here in Long Hill, but I I, you know, the consultant who wrote the housing plan, I'm sure had to, you know, bill a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yeah, for so for general, general things for the board, yeah, that's that's always budgeted every year.
Okay.
So.
This board's pretty low, but.
So Deb, now, uh, based on what we talked about now, Liz, you're gonna go back and we we do this?
I'm going to redo the generator section. I'm gonna talk about the accessory structures.
The sheds.
I'm gonna say the sheds to comply with UCC code and and practical, you know, whatever.
Well, I, if I make the suggestion, let's, why don't, why don't Liz and I redo, I'll do the board observations and the synopsis.
Okay.
And then we'll do a final review.
Right, because we added things, we added paragraphs. So that's what I mean, we're gonna have, we're gonna see that in a final view.
Yes.
And then, next meeting, we adopt it?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
If that works for everybody.
Yeah, fine, email it out and then we'll all look at it.
Yep.
At the next meeting, we're looking to adopt what's presented, not to open up the whole discussion.
Right, exactly, cause we already had the discussion. I mean, there might be some grammatical thing changes, minor things, but nothing, nothing substances.
Right.
Because we all have looked at it in the email, we have any comments, we can say it then.
That, yeah.
Um, so, um, what's coming up next meeting?
Well, next meeting, you have three applications on.
Three?
That hopefully will be easy peasy.
Is nine two?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, nine two, well.
I only see, I only see two.
Two family, uh, they're uh, use variance.
I only see two. Oh, nine two is another one, okay.
Yeah, a new house and a addition with some bulk variances. So, and uh, if everybody got the, you know, my application status, I wanted to provide this, cause literally between our last meeting in June, we received seven new applications. And that's of ones that I didn't know were coming in.
So, you, you feel confident that we can handle these three in one meeting?
No, I'm not confident.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not confident, but I'm.
Who's going first?
Uh, I, uh, seven sixty-six Valley Road has to go first.
Okay, so they're first, and then who's second?
Um, forty-five Longview Terrace, I'm gonna put him in order, and then twenty-six Highland is gonna go on.
Oh, okay, so just the way they're listed here, okay.
Yep, so, worst case scenario, if we, you know, I'm kind of.
We don't get to Highland then.
Right, I'm I'm kind of leaving the second meeting in September somewhat open in case.
That's the sixteenth.
Yes, in case we have to carry anything.
That's, but you already have somebody on there.
I have, yes, only one.
Greenwood Drive.
I think I only put one on the sixteenth.
Yeah, only one, okay, so if we have a carryover from the sec- from the second, we hear it and then we go into the sixth.
Yes.
Then we go into the, okay.
I thought Burger King was coming back here, huh?
Burger King is going to the planning board.
And why is that?
Is why.
Nothing I care. I mean, just give us a simple.
I'm just surprised we did Wendy's here. What's the difference?
Burger King's existing, they're just changing.
Well.
So is Wendy's.
See, here's the, here's the problem with Burger King, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
The problem with Burger King is Burger King started out in nineteen eighty-something, a use variance with the board. In my experience as a a board secretary. When you are with one board.
You stick with it.
You stick with that board, however, Burger King has had other uh, all site plan applications since that, that went to the plan.
Oh, fine, they can have it.
Because, and so the last two or three applications.
Certainly the last one, which was for a very similar application to what they're doing now, which is upgrades to the property. It was, went to the planning board.
They, I, like I said, they can have it, they're they're more than welcome to.
Uh, Steve Warner ultimately with the the, their attorney said.
Okay.
Go to the planning.
Nice of them to tell me.
Yeah.
So then we got, you didn't know that?
We're overworked anyway, we have three, we have three coming up on the sixteen, yeah, so, so, okay.
You only have one on ten seven?
Uh, ten seven, yeah, because that's a big, that's a big one.
What's the?
Alright, that's.
O V properties.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be, that's.
Is that across from the towels?
Oh, God.
How many apartments is that? That's four.
Is that the one across from the towels?
Um, no.
No, this is uh.
Six twenty, where's six twenty?
Main Avenue.
So, he's proposing.
I'm looking at Valley Road.
Is that the one across from the hotel, uh, the hotel?
No, that was already approved.
Yeah, that was already done.
This is down further on the, what?
On the right as you're going toward rally?
Going up, if you're going north on Main, I think it's on the right side, yeah.
Oh, it's on the right, okay.
Lower, yeah, and it's further to the south from Sterling Hotel.
Main, main. What do they wanna do?
He's proposing, because he went through a lot with the D E P too, so he's proposing two structures that are pretty much identical. With.
So he's knocking down what's there?
Yes, and he's proposing four, one of the lots doesn't have anything on it but a garage.
Okay.
And then one, it's like three lots, one staying as is, and then the two lots, he's gonna knock down the garage and is gonna do two buildings with commercial on the front. And then I put to four apartments in total, two and two.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, the D E P gave him a hard time because of when they raised the floodplain in twenty twenty-three.
It went right through his, yeah.
Yeah, he, yeah, Main Street got hit pretty hard.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but that, that, that application, I anticipate taking the whole evening and.
Okay.
You know, public, et cetera, et cetera.
And I'll tell everybody now for the ten twenty-one one, I have to recuse myself, cause that's on firehouse property. So I will not be sitting here. Tom, you can have.
Is that a cell tower?
I'll do that one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a cell tower.
It's my last job before I can work.
Yeah, there you go.
I was a cell site act guy.
There you go.
Cell towers.
I thought you were saying you sold cells.
Yeah.
No, 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 I would go, uh.
He's got a great cell tower player, yeah.
I would think it would be easy, it's just.
I would go find people who would like be interested in like leasing land to AT&T and go to the cell tower. It's actually interesting.
Interesting, yeah, yeah. If you're getting paid, right?
Yeah, yeah, I got.
Yeah?
I had no luck, cause they assigned me Westchester County or no one of these things, so I had to, yeah, spend my years.
And in Jersey, if I can't believe it, they're like, are you nuts? Yeah.
So, uh, Myers-Rose Road, that's to be determined, you haven't figured out when to put that on yet?
Yeah, that one, um, yeah, so I'm, I I'm kind of holding back to see what happens, cause we only have one note, we only have one. Meeting in November, we only have one meeting in December.
Wow, okay, now, is that, it says addition, what are they doing? Addition to the house?
An addition.
I mean, I know that, but is it a garage, is it?
I haven't looked at it.
Back, forward, sideways, right?
If I wrote bulk variances and addition, it just means they're setback variances usually.
Okay, alright, okay.
And I, I can't.
Oh, bulk, I didn't see that, okay. So they are doing the footprint, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will not be here on nine sixteen.
You're gonna miss the nine sixteen, okay. Alright.
Impervious coverage, I think you can handle that without me.
Yeah, everybody's busy.
So we got two on the sixteenth, okay. Pool and bulk, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, Greenwood Drive wants a pool and Hamilton Road wants a bulk variance, okay, alright.
Yeah, those are, tho- those two are hope, you know, again, like existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Hoping that you go quickly.
Alrighty, sounds good, alright. So, any other business we need to do?
Uh, I don't have any, I I I did the uh, the dates for twenty twenty-six, but I don't usually pass those out to you guys until like the fall.
Fine, okay, alright.
But, um.
Did we stay away from the election day?
Always, well, no, I take that back. So the the election day, if it, if it's not presidential election.
Okay.
I'll put a meeting on.
Fine, so.
Presidential, I'm not putting it on. I think that's what we.
So, yes, so the one in, for next year would be on then?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I mean, this, well, this year's, we, no, not on for this year.
No, we're not.
No, this, this year it's.
That would be, it's governor.
The governor one.
Yeah, this year's governor, November, we are on for election day this year, and that's the only, and the reason why is because that's the only day. Literally the only day because there's four Tuesdays in the month of November, first Tuesday is the election day, zoning board. The second day, the second Tuesday is Veterans Day and the office is closed, cause we always close on Veterans Day. The eighteenth is the League of Municipalities, so all of the professionals.
So nobody's.
Nobody's here, and then the lot, the week of Thanksgiving is the planning board.
Right, okay, so, I probably won't make it on that day, cause I'm working the polls.
And December, I've stopped putting the zoning board meeting the first Tuesday of December because. Of the volunteer dinner.
Right, right.
So it's either usually Tuesday or Thursday.
Are they still having it on Tuesday?
She never knows.
I know, I know.
Last minute, it depends on.
So if if it isn't on a Tuesday, we can have the meeting.
Right, I mean, I can change it if you want it.
Klett told me that the end of last year, that she told him for this year to book it, so I don't know.
To book it for a Tuesday.
I'll double check.
For what date, I don't know.
Yeah, well, get that known ahead of time, so.
Well, definitely, but like the last time I talked to her about it, she's like, would you just stop scheduling it that week?
Well, you gotta pin her down and say, you know, because people want their things heard, so if we can get it done.
People want their things heard, but the volunteers all want their dinner.
No, 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 I'm just saying, if the dinner is not on that day, then we can have a meeting, is what I'm saying. I don't, I don't wanna give up a meeting if we're not doing anything.
Oh, no, we can definitely, we can change it if we want, but it's scheduled for the sixteenth right now, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, if that's it, do I have motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, all in favor.
Alright.